This time I'd like to call our regular scheduled village board meeting to order. It is Tuesday, March 5th, 2019. Let the record reflect that it's 7:31 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance?
United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jake, can you just, everyone stay standing for a second? And just like to take a, have a moment of silence for 2018 Tinley Wish recipient, Jeffrey Donovan-Wild, who passed away just last week. Thanks Jake.
Thank you. Madam Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Yonker.
Here.
Trustee Panito.
Here.
Trustee Berg.
Here.
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Glotz.
President.
Trustee Curran.
Here.
President Bannenberg.
Here, thank you. At this time I'd ask for a motion to consider approval of the agenda. Is such a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry, thank you. Item number two, at this time I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular village board meeting held on February 19, 2019.
Seconded.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item number three, Trustee Yonker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion recognizing the students involved in a 2019 youth government program. Is Garrett, come up here.
Thank you, Trustee Yonker. Yes, students ran a full meeting right before this one for the 2019 Youth and Government Program. As most of you know who were here, they did an excellent job. So now we're going to recognize them as I do a roll call for the participating schools. For Tinley Park High School, Morgan Knoll, Marina Morer, Dominic Pellegrino, Emma Gaola, Grace Evans, Julia Bush, Jackson Scanberg, Hannah Hallman, Eric Schut, Marshawn Williams, Nick Stolga, Maddie Ellis, and Megan Knoll. For the Lincoln Way East High School students that participated, Laney O'Boyle, Aiden Plakitis, Gianna Vita, and Luke Zalinski. And we had one homeschooled student, Nicholas De Nova. So we also want to thank the participating schools. Special thanks to Principal Teresa Nolan of Tinley Park High School and Teacher Mike Barsina. Thanks to Principal Sharon Maholic and Patrick, Teacher Patrick Leonard from Lincoln Way East High School and our homeschool teacher Juliette De Nova. So thanks again for participating in this fine program. It was a success. Thank you.
Thanks to you and the CRC, thanks.
Thank you.
Item number four, Trustee Brady.
Yes, sir, I'd like to consider the appointment, or discussion for Officer Milliman. Has served as a full-time police officer for seven and a half years. He's been married to his wife Allison for 11 years, and they have three children. Over the course of his career, John has acquired numerous specialties to include field training officer, master firearms instructor, advanced evidence technician, field juvenile officer, TASER instructor, and hostage negotiator, among many others. John is one of the original members of the Police Department's Honor Guard. John previously worked as a Director of Sports and Outdoor Summer Camp in the Dominican Republic. He is a graduate of Moody Bible Institute where he received a bachelor's degree in youth ministry. John has attended the two-week program at Northwestern University Center for Public Safety School of Supervision of Police Personnel. I'd ask that our deputy clerk to please swear in Police Sergeant Jonathan Milliman.
Hold on a second, we gotta do, that wasn't, I had motion?
So moved.
It was moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we can do the swearing. Right, we go on the procedure on that?
I, Senator.
I, John Milliman.
Do solemnly swear.
Sobbing swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The ordinances of the Village of Tinley Park.
The ordinances of the Village of Tinley Park.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police sergeant.
Faithfully discharge the duties of police sergeant.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
John, the floor's here if you want to make some, yeah, do a family shot, and if you want to brief the public. I know you have some colleagues in the back there. May I add a few words? Okay, we'll continue on with our item this evening. Item number five, at this time I'd ask for a motion to consider the appointment of Ken Howard to Public Works Foreman. Is there such a motion?
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded. Ken Howard is entering his eighth year with the Public Works Department, prior to which he spent four years as a purchasing agent at a steel fabrication company. Ken Howard is proud, is proud to be a lifelong resident of the Village of Tinley Park and comes from a family dedicated to civil service. His father is a 32-year veteran with the Berwyn Police Department, and brother, his brother is an Arlington Heights police officer. His grandfather was a Korean War veteran who worked for Chicago Streets and Sanitation Department for over 30 years. Ken and his wife Peggy, a school social worker, are looking forward to continuing to raise their son Connor in Tinley Park for many years to come. Ken and Peggy will happily be celebrating their third wedding anniversary shortly. Again, this is for the appointment of Ken Howard to the Public Works Foreman. It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry, thank you. Ken, in the audience? Front and center, the podium's yours.
I just want to thank the board and the community for the opportunity. Really looking forward to continuing the service. Thank you again.
You're welcome, Ken. Thank you. Best of luck. Moving on, item six, receive comments from the staff this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. It's not often that we have someone in leadership position who has a 35-year tenure with the village, but I did want to recognize tonight that our treasure Brad Benhausen recently passed that milestone last Friday, I believe. Monday, of course, as always. Within the last week. So want to thank Brad certainly for his dedication and all the work that he's done for the village and appreciate everything that he's done. So just wanted to make the board and the residents swear that.
Yep. Learned something new before this meeting by the students as well, Brad. I didn't, Brad, I didn't realize that your position was part-time when you first started. That's pretty interesting. Very good. Appreciate it. Thanks for the 35 years. Any other staff member care to comment? Any staff comments this evening? No? Great.
I have something for Dave, Jake. The, Dave, I checked the Illinois General Assembly's website, noticed the resolutions were not acted on for the mental health center. What, are, did we get an email on that, or?
You're talking about the property resolutions? Yeah, I know that they had gone to committee, I'll have to find out what the status is.
Okay.
Anything else from staff before we proceed? Nope, move on to item seven, receive comments in the public. Sir.
Mr. Chairman, I may need 30 additional seconds.
Does anybody have a problem with that? Continue, sir.
Thank you. My name is Frank Williams. I'm a 31-year resident of Tinley Park, and let me add, in the interest of transparency, a volunteer supporting all three One Tinley Park candidates running for village trustee in the April 2nd election. I rise to respectfully pose two basic questions to all of you on the dais. May I go ahead?
Is your speech entirely about politics, or is it questions about village government?
No, it's not entirely about politics and its intentions are not to endorse any political campaign. I'm just being transparent about who I am.
You're welcome to proceed as long as your comments regard village business.
Thank you. I rise to respectfully pose two basic questions to all of you on the dais. Please respond by show of hands if you unequivocally and vigorously support the constitutionally protected personal property and private property rights of all Tinley Park residents, regardless of their political loyalties or affiliations.
It's not really a question and answer, but you can continue on, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Again, it's public comment.
Please respond by show of hands if you vigorously oppose and denounce trespassing and theft of personal property such as political campaign signs, which actually has occurred in recent days against homeowners placing signs in their yards supporting the candidates of their choice.
Again, I'll mention that we're not going to be fielding questions regarding politics tonight, and that is a direct question regarding politics.
Okay, then I will make a statement as a member of the public.
Feel free.
There are overwhelmingly high percentages of law-abiding supporters of the two parties and two independent candidates who volunteer many hours of personal time delivering those signs. Lately in dangerous bitter cold weather, some of them are youngsters, excitedly involved for the first time in the workings of our democratic republic, and others are expectant moms who feel strongly enough to endure the weather, standing up for what they deeply believe is best for their children and families. I am so blessed to know some of them. Undoing their efforts is a slap in the face. And what does this teach our children? Democracy is a fairy tale? A feel-good story? Such thieves of voters' rights should just take the next step and fix elections, skip the charade? The rules only apply to some of us? Where is the incentive for anybody to abide by them? We don't know who has committed or endorsed this conduct, but it's more than mischief. It's dangerous and criminal. Even if my chosen candidates were to do it, they'd lose my support in a heartbeat, and I mean that without equivocation. Returning to the matter of private property rights of village residents, we should all feel personally violated when others seek to undermine the free speech rights those signs represent. The next time it could be your rights that are violated. I'm encouraged tonight by the one response I've been able to get from those present representing all of us in Tinley Park, and hope this brings these violations to an end. To each of you, I respectfully ask that you convey to your respective parties and volunteers that there is no place for violation of these precious rights in any election anywhere in America. Voting is a sacred right that braver souls than many of us, preserved by giving their last full measure of devotion. Luis Manrique was my neighbor growing up in Blue Island. A son of immigrants, killed in combat defending our U.S. Constitution. Charles Chicky Pajaski, a family friend, piloting a U.S. military aircraft, shot down and killed defending our U.S. Constitution. Men and women like them are why we can peacefully gather here. Do any of us think Luis and Chicky were concerned with who was president, or governor, or mayor? Their concern was preserving our rights to choose them in free and fair elections. That was the mission. Let every supporter of every candidate thank these fallen souls by pledging to let this election season be honest and issues-oriented, with the goal of becoming united as a village after the votes have been tallied. Thank you for letting me speak.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I would just mention that, to wrap that up, to bring that back to village business, if there's a theft, please report it to the police department.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I could say to your response.
Thank you.
Check those doorbell cameras. Everybody's got them out there now. Maybe you could find out who's doing it.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Basic. I'm here because this was in my Tinley Junction, and I'm really concerned about it because I want to know if it was put there through the village board, or did the village board even know that these developers were going to have a invite, meet and greet with all the developers for Melody Square? And I thought that the village was going to have a, a meeting at, I believe it was at the train station from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. I want to know how this got in the paper and what...
Madam Ema, did you want to brief the board and the residents?
Nobody had seen it.
Yeah, this was the developers that really decided to do this on their own. They're doing, I think as explained, it's a meet and greets where they're... They're doing, I think as explained, it's a meet and greets where they're introducing themselves to the residents.
For what purpose, though? We don't even know what's going to happen there.
Well, again, as I said, I don't want to speak for the developers because they're the ones who put the ad in, who set up the meeting, and I would attend the meeting if you want by now, but it's...
Oh, I intend on attending the meeting, but I want to know, did the village board set this up with...
No.
The answer was no. He just answered that for you.
Have you spoke to them, Dave?
Yes, I have.
And were they going to involve us or is this on their own?
This is on their own, yeah. I did talk to them. You know, my advice was to wait, but I mean, they have the right to do it. They're introducing their team, and so that's what they chose to do.
Was there something in the RFP or are they doing something different where they were supposed to involve the, the village was supposed to give approval, or are they doing something different than what was in the RFP?
If it was on their own, what I want to know is, they've already decided what is going into Melody Square in that area?
Well, no, I mean, the village board will eventually approve what goes into that area, so that's...
But how could they state it in the paper that that's what they're going to put in there? It's what I want to know.
The ad says it's an open house or meet and greet. I don't think it says this is a final plan.
This is a complete, it says right here, complete plan.
Again, it's a meet and greet. We didn't set this up, so I can't really speak for the developer. I would, I think, go to the meeting and if you have questions, ask them there.
Have you, you reached out to them, Dave? I mean, this is kind of concerning if they're supposed to do this in conjunction with the village and they're requesting $69 million, they just go out and do this on their own. I don't remember what that article said, but she's saying that it was, they're showing their plan?
Yes, they're stating exactly what's going to happen with that property. 435 rans down homes, multimillion-dollar clubhouse, trans-orientated luxury blocks, and 50-plus acres of open space. This is the development. So, can you tell me?
We should have this communication on January 3rd before they got...
We'll move on to the next comment.
Hi, my name is Joe Longini, Tinley Park resident, I guess 16 years or so. Prior to like 2014, I never paid attention to anything any of yous were ever doing. Never watched a board meeting, never talked to a mayor, never even looked. Mid-2014, I noticed the grass in front of my house, Veterans Park, started to grow real tall, and it was odd. It started to collect water where it usually wouldn't. So, I did what I thought I should do when I talked to the mayor. That was November 3rd, 15. I talked to Mayor Seaman, and I asked him, "Why is this grass growing? No one's told us anything. No one knows anything about it." He says, "Oh, you got to go to the park district meeting. That's tomorrow night." Okay? So, November 4th, I go to the meeting. I sat there and I listened to the park district approve $70,000 for the swing center, Veterans Park. I listened to the stuff going on. I'm like, "How did they get this far without telling anybody? Nobody knows anything about this. Nobody's been made aware of this." So, I got up at the end of that meeting, and John Kirin was the head of Parks and Recreations at the time, and I asked John three questions, real simple. "Are you pulling the small ball field?" He said, "No." I said, "You pulling the tennis courts?" He said, "No." I says, "The swampland where the grass isn't getting cut anymore, is that just going to become a swamp now?" And the tone of his voice changed, and he said something, well, verbatim, he said, "The Army Corps of Engineers has designated this a wetland. There's absolutely nothing I can do. My hands are tied." About right, John?
No.
So, the next day, I did what I thought I should do. I got on the horn with the Army Corps of Engineers. As it turns out, nobody had been in touch with them since 2011 when Mayor Zuboraki got a permit to work on the ditch at 160th place, at which point, if there was intent on switching this to a wetland, it would have been attached to that. It wasn't there, which in my book made John Kirin less than honest. So, I was upset with the way things were going, so I started going to these meetings, going to these meetings and just hounding John. I mean, John was tired of seeing me, you know? So, I'm going to all these meetings, causing trouble, trying to educate the people about the wetland and the mosquitoes that come with it and all the problems that are associated with this. Nobody's really listening. They're more concerned with what color the swing sets are going to be. So, after a while, they stopped work on the park. John Kirin retired. My neighbors were all congratulating, "Good job, good job," because they figured I had something to do with it because I just couldn't let this guy go because he was dishonest with me, and I just couldn't let it go. Turns out, next thing you know, he's up here on the board with you. So, I have a real hard time with the whole situation because what transpired was, they changed this wetland jurisdiction by flooding this park, and they did this by neglect or intentional damming regardless. In order to declare a wetland, it has to have three stipulate, two of three stipulations. Needs wetland soil, which the whole park is peat moss. It's a peat bog. Since they did the soil samples, it is a wetland soil, oldest in Cook County as a matter of fact. The wetland grass, I asked him why the grass was growing. He said it was an experiment to see what kind of grass would grow. Do you remember that, John?
That was, well, go ahead and keep talking.
It's still crabgrass, John. It's always been crabgrass. So, he didn't have the plant life. So, in order to change his jurisdiction, it had to contain waters of the United States. In order to do this, it had to be blocked up and left to sit. I watched this grass grow and this thing stay flooded for nine months until September of 16, I guess it was. I went across the street with a straight edge shovel and I cleaned out the middle ditch. I drained the whole thing in three days by myself, didn't say anything to anyone. I see where the problem is. The next thing you know, the Army Corps comes back with the, their first jurisdiction designation was at the water line. They have no boundary. Their second one was complete jurisdictional boundary over the park, which was correct because the soil samples matched up with that. Then they came back with a third one where they gave a little bay area where the puddle was, and oh, that's the wetland. Okay, so now I'm losing respect for the Army Corps of Engineers because this is like a fart in a windstorm. They really got no idea what's going on here. So, the next thing you know, I'm sorry, can I go for another second? This will be over shortly.
Just wrap it up.
I'm like, I won't be offensive. So, in any case, I want to come to the meeting tonight because, you know, John's running for trustee, and I just don't find him to be a trustworthy character. So, I go back in the minutes, and I'm trying to organize all the thoughts, the dates and times at which I went there. And as it turns out, they don't have me on any of the minutes for any of the meetings except for three at the park district. And I was there like every meeting, just like a pit bull. So, they don't have me on the records, but what I really found upsetting was, after I'm reading through these, I caught something. On January 20th, there was a meeting where a guy named Steven Bosco was at the meeting with us talking about the soccer for the Bobcats. And as soon as I saw it, I realized I'd seen it before, and then I backtracked. And what I found was, on November 4th, I went to the first meeting. On January 20th...
Could you just say what year? I'm just...
January 20th, 16, and April 6th, 16. Both of those meetings have exactly the same minutes on them. They took the minutes from the April meeting, John Kirin's name was taken off of that piece of paper, and they put it right on the minutes for the earlier meeting. So, basically what I'm saying is, the January 20th and April 6th meetings, the minutes are fudged. None of the intelligent stuff I said was on any of the record.
Okay, sir.
I was stricken from the record, and then they had duplicates shifting them around to show whatever they want to show.
Sir, thank you. We've been courteous and extended your time.
Just the dates are what's important. If anybody's interested in this at all, to give it any credibility, you look up the park district minutes for January 20th, and you look up the park district minutes for April 6th, and you'll find the same sheet of paper, and the only difference is your name's missing, John. I don't suppose you knew anything about that either, did you?
Thank you.
I think you should probably bring that to the park district, let them know. Also, just for clarification, Joe did come to a meeting complaining...
To a meeting? Yet rich...
Sir, your public comments finished.
Regarding the park. I explained to him that we've been in contact with the Army Corps of Engineers. He didn't believe me. The next month, Joe, when you came, I gave you a letter explaining the response from the Army Corps of Engineers, and that's when you said we were in collusion with the Army Corps of Engineers. It explained that that park had been a wetland since the 1960s.
Right. Why all of a sudden was it so important to change this wetland jurisdiction? After you did this, all of a sudden, Chicago Metropolitan Water Works comes in, bullies us into spending $2 million on drain pipes and stuff. Then you get this big deal done, then you retire, then you take off.
Excuse me, sir.
Now you got this $120,000 pension. You're living like a fat cat. You let the swamp...
Sir, how many more times do I have to say it?
And then you left.
Sir, I don't want to have you be removed, but please, your comment is over. Your comment is over. Thank you.
See you next week, John.
Comment is over. Have a seat. Sir, before you begin your comment, can you pause for a moment?
Sure.
Sir, is your comment going to be regarding village business this evening?
Yes, it's going to touch on Department of Justice compliance concerns with the recent settlement, police, police services.
It's going to touch on compliance from the village standpoint or on behalf of residents?
Well, you can determine that. It's regarding...
I just want to make sure that we're perfectly clear here.
It's regarding protection for residents.
I want to make sure I'm, before you begin your comment, everything you're going to speak about is about village business.
Much more than the Tinley Park park district history thing, absolutely.
Do you want to have a recess and talk to them?
I'm only going to be talking in general terms. You can see I'm not even really mentioning any names here, Mr. Mayor.
You can proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, as you remember, not too long ago, you held a press conference to express concern against people distributing allegedly hateful flyers on Tinley Park driveways. I brought in a small sample of some of the hatred, harassment, intimidation, and other negative actions being taken against residents in this town here tonight for your review along with the chief of police. Now, we all realize that government can't be responsible for people failing to have social media etiquette. We can, however, help enforce sensible current laws when appropriate and help promote peace. We should expect government officials and staff to promote peace. I have many questions after seeing much of the recent cyberbullying, which I am hoping we can get answers to tonight. If we know that someone is spreading medical or patient information and violating HIPAA laws, do we enforce that law or forward information on that violation to the county, state, or federal levels of law enforcement? Do we do that?
You don't have to answer. Chief, you don't have to answer. Chief, I don't think that we should get into a question and answer at this point regarding this topic.
All right. Well, I mean, if an entity is disseminating medical, private information, I mean, I would think if it's not...
A call to the police department for that would be more proper than what we're doing right now.
Okay.
If you feel harassed, I would, that would be a call to the police department.
Okay, okay. Well, yeah, I would hope that the police could take action on their own to notify the appropriate authorities. I don't know if that's a local, county, state, or federal level law enforcement. Maybe, you know, counselor, I don't know.
I don't.
If we see someone spreading hatred toward low-income workers, do we report that information to the Department of Justice? Are we still trying to fulfill any obligations we still have to the agreement we have with the Department of Justice regarding the recent lawsuit settlement? When incidents of spreading hate, harassment, or intimidation occur on Facebook, readers or victims can report the incident to Facebook, certainly. Eventually, Facebook will try to respond and may remove the offensive or law-breaking post. The vast majority of Tinley Park-related Facebook pages have responsible and transparent moderators who will usually delete such ugly posts of hate, harassment, and intimidation before Facebook will, or even before Facebook receives a request or alert regarding the offensive post. There is one Facebook page, however, that not only seems to welcome such hateful posts, but even seems to encourage posts of hate, harassment, and intimidation.
Mr. Doyle, I'm sorry, this is not regarding any village business whatsoever. You're talking about private residents and private Facebook accounts that has nothing to do with this board or our village staff.
It's coming around to it, though, Mr. Mayor.
Can you get straight to the point then? Because, I mean, I'm going to gavel it down one more time, and then we're going to shut the public comment down for you. Can you get right to the point about village business then?
Okay, well, I am. I mean, you know, here and there, I've got a sentence in each paragraph at least, and it's there, Mr. Mayor.
It's not regarding village business, though. As you're talking about Facebook accounts and Facebook things that are happening in the private sector, they have nothing to do with this village, village business whatsoever.
Okay, I'm getting that. I thought we had ethics ordinances which prohibit trustees from hosting pages of hatred, harassment, intimidation. Do we not have ethics ordinances that prevent that, counselor?
Excuse me, we're in public comment. It'd be one at a time, please.
We do have ethics ordinances. I don't have it in front of me. There are certainly ethical guidelines that all officials need to abide by. Whether that, I don't know what you're talking about with Facebook. I don't know that that applies, but we do have ethics ordinances. And there are ways, if you believe, there are ways for residents to make ethics complaints. Public comment is not one of those ways. There's a defined way to file ethics complaints. If you believe that those have been violated, you certainly can file those complaints.
Okay, so I can't, I can't do it while I'm here? Okay.
You can, but I don't see the link.
Well, if we don't have ethics ordinances that prohibit such behavior, I think it's past time that we do. I mean, is a trustee supposed to be orchestrating or accommodating the cyberbullying of residents? And Tinley Park residents have been bombarded with political mailers recently. Each party wants to claim that they are tough on crime, but they've been silent regarding these recent incidents of harassment, intimidation, and hatred.
Mr. Doyle, your time is over. Thank you very much.
Did have some interruptions there. I don't think you're being really fair to my time lines, but I just want to say really quick, Mr. Mayor, that I think you and the board and local law enforcement should enforce current laws, policies, ethical ordinances, and work together to counter all these disturbances of the peace. And that's why I think this is village-related. These are all disturbances of the peace.
The process would be...
Not only the victims, but the spouses of victims, the children of victims.
Mr. Doyle, the process is the same. No, that is certainly not the truth. Concern level is, that's not the truth. There's a process that you could follow. If you feel you're being harassed, you could call the police department, file a report. It'll be followed through by the police department.
I'm sorry, but, you know, my time is going to be a little bit expanding on what he said, and I believe I have the right to talk about certain matters, too, that have to do with this. And first of all, I'd like to thank Brian Yonker for your time serving. I hope someday that you do come back. Just wanted to say that.
I'll just mention again that any comments that will be made will be regarding village business and will not be politically motivated.
Well, yeah, but I know, because my four minutes, and I believe that I can still say what I want, talk about what I want to talk about. I mean, Michael Stuckley did it in the past, too.
We could talk about village business, ma'am.
Okay. I'm Tina Williams. I've lived in Tinley for 20 years.
Pull the microphone down.
In my home. My husband has lived there since 1965. I'm here tonight to talk about major bullying problem happening in Tinley Park and in Tinley Park Facebook groups. I first like to recall a village meeting by Michael Stuckley done in 2016. He was claiming that the citizens of Tinley Park group contained content derogatory in nature. The group doesn't allow opposing views and removes content users that go against their beliefs, that they are cyberbullies and keyboard warriors. He mentions Ken Shaw being his biggest offender.
Ma'am, we're going to ask that you leave all names out of your comments, please. There's no reason for, there's no reason for personal texts.
Why was it okay for him to mention names in 2016?
Because it's 2019.
Okay.
And these are the rules of this dais and this board are following.
I don't know if I can do this speech without mentioning names.
I'd ask that you refrain from it. And again, if there's a harassment, something, if there's something that you're feeling harassed by, I'd ask that you...
Oh, yeah, there is. Michael Stuckley calling me a cop hater on Facebook.
I'd ask that you reach out to the police department and follow the rules and procedures that follow for that.
I was told that I can comment for my four minutes.
You could comment regarding village business. Is anything that you're talking about regarding village business or is it...
It does.
...an attack personally on yourself?
Yeah. I'm still going to talk about what I want to talk about. I can't talk about hate groups on Facebook and different things that involve village business.
It's not, that's nothing to do with village business. I mean, I'm just being perfectly blunt with you.
And that Michael Plotz promotes this kind of behavior in a hate group?
Again...
And then he's Jack Harris, nice job, Mike, we all know who you are.
Okay. So this is for the record, I'm asking you for the second time to please direct your questions regarding village business.
I'm the only one that has to do that, but everyone else tonight has been talking about...
I've, I've asked every single person the same thing.
And they kept talking.
I'm allowing you to regarding village business.
Oh, and everybody else has to talk about village business only, and I can't talk about anything else?
If you have comments directing village business, please continue.
Alright, whatever.
Mr. Mayor, point order, isn't the...
He doesn't get to call point orders.
Mr. Doyle, Mr. Doyle, Mr. Doyle. Mr. Doyle.
Okay, anyhow, I just wanted to say, good luck to, you know, the trustees for the concerned citizens, I wish you...
Okay. No more political, please.
Right, I'll talk to Matt Walsh next week on this.
I mean, I'll make a statement after, every time. Do I need to say the same thing?
Uh, I think it's been well repeated.
Okay, thank you.
I will need probably about five minutes, 30 seconds. Uh, good evening, everyone, and board members. Uh, I'm here tonight to raise questions about the improvement and changes to local government, which we hoped would have, uh, have changed in the last round of public elections. Our local government officials are a part of a representative government model. We elect those whom we, as voters, choose to make decisions convincing the public that they have the best, our best interests at heart. They have taken up the idea of being the civil servant, to serve the public, to, for the greater good of the community, over their own goals. But why do some elected officials believe that they are once elected with that shiny title of so, uh, civil servant, now a license to fleece and enrich themselves on the backs of their fellow neighbors? That's us. Do these people sitting on the board have the interests of their neighbors at heart? I mean, isn't it easier just to make your friends and family benefit from your found, newfound power of a civil servant, over those silly, common Joe taxpayers? I think there is a common ideal that everybody can get behind, is the idea of cutting government waste and fraud. That is a common thing that impacts all of us average Joe taxpayers. I know that for everyone would be upset if that behavior was put in front of everybody, but yet, nothing was done about it for anyone. So, I don't know how many people here have ever perused the public FOIA site. There's, it's very interesting, when you guys get some time, take a look up there. There's an email from Mr. Rob Zimmer to Jake Vanderberg, stating, on Tuesday, January 8th, that there was developers from the Bremen Cash Store who were scheduled 2:00 P.M. meeting. But, for some reason, Jake could not make the meeting, our duly-elected, nominated mayor. It seemed like Jake was a no-show, because at 3:00 P.M., developers left on their own. And a following communication from, uh, Rob, stating that they had left, and said that they wanted to reschedule. Then, I mean, Jake, what the heck are you doing, man? We got people trying to bring business into this town, and you didn't even have the common decency for somebody willing to come in and bring business to our town, to call them and call and cancel. No respectable business owner acts like this. Maybe an irresponsible, petulant child would, but who knows? Now, to top it off, starting on January 9th, 8:40 a.m., the next day, Jake was up early, bright-eyed and decide, bushy-tailed, decided to email Rob again, and asked him to clear his schedule for the rest of the month. Like, "Cancel all my readings, or all my meetings for the rest of the month." Now, that's a bit of an odd request. I mean, at my job, I have to answer for going in and saying, "I'm not talking to anybody for the rest of the month." I mean, come on, this is January 9th. I mean, you got, what, 31 days in January? Okay. I mean, somebody has to answer for this, right? Look, Jake, you receive a salary for your job. You are our employee. It sounds like to me you decided to just take January off from your duly-elected position. Hence, if you're not doing the job, then you shouldn't get paid. Now, most people call that fraud. If you're getting paid and not doing the job, that's fraud. Now, Jake, if you don't want the job of mayor, resign. No one is gonna stop you. You're holding up village business and things getting done. We're not talking $20 or $100, we're talking millions of dollars. Thank you. How about you donate January's salary to maybe Together We Cope? Because we sure as hell know they'll put the money to good use. Your lack of decision-making and guidance, and enriching your friends and family from your position, acting as if you're above the rule of law, and for some reason, it's always about you, Jake. Well, I for one am tired of this. You've had multiple chances to correct your actions, and every time, you doubled down on stupid. Just know, me, the average Joe taxpayer, is walking, watching, and talking to anyone in the village willing to listen on how to correct corruption of selfish board members acting in their own best interests, and not those as the average Joe taxpayer in the village. Anyone? Comments?
Alright, speed it up, because you'd be worried extending your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do I need to reiterate the policy that's going on this evening, Mr. Stuckly?
No, I'm not on Facebook right now. Yes, sir, Mr. Vanderberg. Good evening.
Good evening.
Back to the infamous BKD report. Trustee Pino, Pino, you stated from a dais that you're not sure why this was brought up to the public. In an email on October 22nd, sent by you, it reads, "Thanks for sharing your thoughts on this issue. Unfortunately, this is an issue that the board still needs to discuss. I'm not sure why this is, why this concern was brought to the public before the Board of Trustees, but I'm hopeful we can find out if your concerns were warranted." Well, they certainly should be warranted because of the so-called cover-up in the BKD fraud report.
Wait, is he reading an email that I allegedly wrote?
Yeah, October 20th, October...
Can I see it?
October 22nd.
Are you reading from it?
No, I don't have it. It's, I know, October 22nd, I can email it to you if you want.
Could you FOIA it?
It's, it was a FOIA, yeah.
Could you send it to me? Because I'd like to know what you're talking about and...
It's, that's exactly what you said.
See if I can make whatever connection it is that you've made out of whatever it is you've done.
But, um, why did, why, why would, why, it's, why, why shouldn't it brought, be brought up in front of the public? Because from what's coming out now, it's really bad.
What's coming out about what?
Well, we got threatened with a lawsuit because of Trustee Yonker making more than mention of, of the report.
My understanding is one trustee told BKD something that was unreliable, and they withdrew it because they feared they'd...
What trustee? What trustee was that?
I think you know what trustee it is, the one that's been feeding you whatever information.
Trustee Pino, again, we shouldn't do question and answer.
Yeah.
Hold on, Mike.
Can you stop the time?
Mike, I was gonna say, one trustee.
Stop the time?
I, there was 20 people that was interviewed. I was not part of the, our, our Q plus.
Trustee Glatz, this is out of order.
I'm answering his question.
The member is out of order.
Then you should've stopped him.
The member is out of order.
That he was out of order? Is that what you're saying?
He is getting direct questions from the, from a member of the public, this is public comment, item number seven.
So, if you go through the BKD report and read it...
Trustee Glatz.
Just like you don't the other agenda items.
Trustee Glatz, you're out of order.
There was staff that was in there.
You're out of order. Finish up your comment, Mr. Stuckly.
Well, what kind of time do I got left?
20 seconds, continue.
20 seconds?
I'll add, I'll add 20 seconds to your time. Continue your comment.
Alright, the report was leased to a contractor who then hired a lawyer to rescind a cease and desist order not till they released the port, the report, so they will be named in a lawsuit. Not one board member ever has commented on the egregious behavior of Trustee Yonker. Moving on, Trustee Curran, why did you not read the BKD report when you had it like for two months?
Trustee Curran, there's no reason to respond.
Yep. Here's another thing. The, uh, village staff and the clerk prepare numerous reports and packets for you guys to read. There's been many times, Trustee Pino, when you're up here and you're saying, you were asking questions, and this isn't an attack by any means, and you're sounding like a concerned trustee up there, but the answers to your questions are in the packet, you have to read the packet. I read the packets before every meeting. So when you're asking a question, especially like when you're asking about Phase 2 of Tinley Park Mental Health Center...
You mean the Phase 2 remediation thing?
Yeah, that you didn't really know about, but now you know about it.
Because I spoke to somebody from the EPA after getting the question during a committee meeting, and that person said, "Was there a Phase 1 report?" And that's why I asked the question, because the day before, I did my due diligence and talked to somebody, and they told me there wasn't.
Can I get 30 more seconds? Can you, can you tell me where the hotspots are in Tinley Park? 30 seconds. Can you tell me where the hotspots are in Tinley Park?